To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Let's pray. Well, God, our Father, we thank you for tonight. Again, this opportunity to consider the administration of this community. Father, we pray your blessings of wisdom and knowledge and guidance. Father, also tonight, we pray a special prayer for our children as they return to classes. Father, that this would be a safe community for them, that our schools would be safe, and we thank you for those who have that responsibility. And Father, the power of your Spirit to enable them to be powerful men and women in not only instructing but protecting and helping our children grow and thrive. Father, we give all these prayers to you because we know you are righteous, you are holy, you are good, and we submit to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's remain standing for a moment of silence. We've got wars all over the world. We have weather events taking people's lives. Thank you all. Please be seated. Mr. January, would you please call the role of the council?
Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we have the Employee of the Month for July. Judge Velasco, would you please approach the podium? Chaz and Shonda.
Town manager Michael Griffin always says that this is one of his favorite traditions with the town council meetings, and it's one of my favorite as well to see us honor our dedicated employees and what they get to do and what they're doing for the community. So I will hand it over to the town court staff to talk about all the great things that our employee of the month is doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Bella, members of the town council, and the vision, department heads, and the public. I am honored and privileged today to address you at a momentous occasion in the awarding of this month's Maryville Employee of the Month representative from the town court. As you are aware, the award is earned and given to employees who have displayed outstanding performances, who have shown exemplary work ethic, and they have gone far above the normal duties of their job description, and who've shown exceptional skills in the performance of their duties. In addition, who contribute positively each and every day to the department and to the town and its residents, and who perform their duties with the highest degree of professionalism. Such person is our recipient tonight, Attorney Craig Hanson. Attorney Hanson brings to the job more than 50 years of legal experience. Coincidentally between he and I, we have nearly 100 years of legal experience. He has been with the court for nearly 20 years. He started with my predecessor, Judge George Paris, and then continued with Judge Gina Jones, and finally, he's been with me for the past five years. He has exceptional legal skills, have served the indigent defendants well during his time of service. With depend on his legal experience every day, he sometimes serves as my temporary judge and always does an excellent job. I commend all of his efforts on behalf of all his clients and congratulate him for a job well done. And here to present this award and some small token of our appreciation is Shonda Flowers, our town court chief administrative officer.
Great. You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Thank the town for allowing us to have this month to be able to present our Employee of the Month, Attorney Craig Hanson. We have...
Oh, geez.
We also gave him a token from our staff. You'll love that treat. Tell me later if you like that. And then, of course, the town also gave an appreciation award, a certificate of appreciation, as well as a token of their appreciation as well. Congratulations, Craig.
Thank you.
Picture time.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Attorney Hanson.
It's been a long time, because when I started, Joe was with me.
There you go.
We were in the court together.
Both public defenders.
Yeah, many moons ago.
A long time.
Congratulations, Craig.
Thanks.
Moving on tonight to the job fair update. Chaz. I hear we had a very successful job fair this year.
Yes, thanks, Linda, for putting on the job fair every year. We had over 70 different vendors that were at our job fair and over 650 job seekers that came through. We did a survey that was sent out to all the vendors, and about 31 that responded said that they were anticipating hiring over 260 people. So that's really a great thing to hear from our job fair. So excellent job to Linda, and Lisa, and Brenda, and Barb, and Sipana. All of them were very heavily involved in this and making sure that it went on. So thank you to all of them. But as part of that, we did a raffle, and we had a couple people selected that were just at the job fair, and then a couple that went to our job fair preparation event, the Ready, Set, Hired, which was also very successful. But from the job fair, we have tablets that are being awarded to Zachary Spurling and Donald Sturgis.
All right. Nice. Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, if you guys... Yeah, I just want to stand right here. And then, from the people that participated in the Ready, Set, Hired preparation event, we have laptops for Joe, is it Timpey?
Yes.
Joe Timpey and Tiffany Washington.
Oh, that's great. Congratulations, guys. Very nice. Moving on tonight to public comments. We have moved public comments up to the beginning of the meeting so that comments can be directed to us about either business on this agenda or future agendas. So if there's any public comment, please approach the podium, and we allow three minutes for public comment. Does anyone have a public comment for us? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on tonight to the consent agenda. We have the Accounts Payable Register voucher approval for August 12th, the ARP Accounts Payable Register voucher for August 12th, the approval of town council meeting minutes of July 22nd, the approval of the work-study meeting minutes of July 16th, the approval of the 25-26 town insurance coverage, the approval of the LPA consulting contract, which is 79th Avenue and Mississippi Street improvements, and the approval of the attorney contract. Motion, Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Councilor Neal, right?
Yes.
For approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and motion carries. We have no special orders tonight. Moving on to the Board of Zoning Appeals Action. Sheila Shine.
Mr. President, we have one application for a large gathering permit, and it is for the Indian Culture Center located at 8605 Maryville Road, and they are seeking their Indian Cultural Fest permit. The event will be held Sunday, August 17, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This event is held to celebrate Indian culture. Approximately 300 people are expected to attend. No tickets will be sold. There will be three drinking fountains available for use. Indoor restrooms will be made available to the public. Total disposal is supplying two dumpsters and six trash cans. Telephone service is available to the public as well as onsite parking. There are 150 spaces available, but no overflow parking. There will not be any overnight stays. Entertainment will be provided by the members of the Northwest Indiana Hindu Religious Center. Animals will not be a part of this assembly, and the petitioner has supplied the amusement and entertainment permit as well as food service permit. Security will be provided by the Maryville Police Department. And, Mr. President, as of last year, just like last year, we told them that there will be no fire under tents. So they are aware of that.
Right. Are we going to have Bob available to stop by like he did last year and make sure?
Yes, he will.
Okay. Great. Is somebody here from the...
No.
Okay. We do this every year, guys. This is their annual festival. Is there a motion for approval?
Some moved. Second.
Motion for Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Councilor Shee, for approval of this permit. Questions or counsel or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports. Budget and Finance, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. I have no report for tonight.
Street Department and Park Maintenance, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Today, the Street Department was doing crack ceilings on 73rd Avenue and the Fourth Ward. They're still doing park maintenance with the mowing and cleaning of all our local parks, and beautification project with the flowers that Steve and his crew are tending to, and Still Branch Pickup. And they finished the floral mural on the bike path, which a 12-year-old girl donated to the Street Department. Am I correct, Steve?
Correct.
And do you have a picture of that mural?
I do on my phone. Chaz was out and took a bunch of pictures, and he'll get them up on the website.
Okay.
For everybody to see, but she did a really nice job. Turned out really nice.
Yeah, I would have liked for the audience and for everybody to see the picture.
Absolutely.
This was done by a 12-year-old girl and donated to the Street Department. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very nice. Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak. Moving on to council affairs, Councilor Pettit.
Mr. President, I have no report with Michael convalescing. He and Joe and I need to get together on pending ordinances.
Very good. Personal policy and employee benefits, Councilor Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Environmental affairs, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, I had a call from a woman living in Creekwood Crossings, and I believe she was calling in about the Beaver Dam, which I checked out with Matt Lake. And that property was donated by the developer to the homeowners association. So when the HOA receives property or a donation from the developer, it is up to them to clean out that ditch, or what's it called, Matt? The Beaver Dam?
Yeah, there was a Beaver Dam there, and it's actually still there. Tom Larson trapped the beaver. They hired Tom Larson. He's one of two licensed beaver trappers in Lake County. He said it was the largest he's ever seen.
Yes.
It's over eight feet tall. So you think about a differential of water level, eight feet.
Right.
And that's how much water this is being held back. And there's a property that contains a wetland that's owned by the HOA, and they are responsible for that. Next to it, Providence owns property there, and that's, you know, where the conveyance is. Between the two, they're lining up a contractor to remove the Beaver Dam, and so that will get resolved. But it took a little bit of awareness to let everybody know, you know, who owns what and what responsibilities they have.
I had found out from you, it was zoned by the developer, correct? And then he donated it to the HOA.
Yeah, the developer forms the HOA, and then the HOA.
So who is going to pay to clean it up, the HOA?
That's between the HOA and Providence Homes, because it's right on the border there between the two properties.
Yeah.
Providence Homes still owns Phase 6 Outlets there, and then the wetland, the four-acre wetland parcel is owned by the HOA for Phase 1.
Well, that was very interesting, and I appreciated the picture that you sent me on the cleaning of the Kaiser Ditch.
Yes.
So that looks like that's up to part 2. So thank you, Matt, and that is my report, Mr. President.
Very good.
Thank you.
I do know we have some pending donations or some retention ponds going up for public sale, right? So are we going to purchase those? There's one, I think, or two in your district and one in mine.
Yeah.
I know that Attorney Anderson sent me information about one that just became available. So I'm going to forward that to Joe so we can get it to Matt.
I'll do the same, Mr. President.
You'll be purchasing those, right, through the Stormwater Management District?
Typically, if it goes on tax sale, it should be a residential subdivision, not a commercial or industrial.
Just as residential.
Yeah. So typically, I think the county basically deeds it over, quitclaim deeds it over.
This one was in Savannah Ridge, an old retention pond.
Oh, okay. Is that the one? Okay.
Right at the property line.
West of Savannah Ridge there?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to go through a process on the commission or sale.
Yeah.
And eventually, what happens is they issue us a tax deed.
Yeah.
A tax lien. We perfect on the tax lien, then we eventually get a tax deed to the property from the county. It's at no cost.
Okay.
But there's a process to go through on that.
Thank you. We'll get you the information, Matt, so you can follow up. Thank you. Moving on to public safety, Ms. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We will start planning for upcoming fall activities, which is going to be the trunk of tree, and then also planning for the Christmas tree lighting that we do every year. So we'll start planning for that, but other than that, that's it.
Very good. Economic development, Councilor Pettit.
Really quickly, Mr. President, two weeks from tonight, we'll have an RDC meeting at 6 o'clock. But more importantly, I advised Angie Chilcot, and I hope all six of you got the memo from Angie about the collection we got on the 15% refund on tax abatements to the tune of $597,000. This is why we do economic development. This is why we do tax abatement, because those properties would not have ever generated that kind of money for the town of Maryville. So kudos to Angie and Joanna for bird dogging this with the county. I know it took a long time for her to get everything squared away with some of the previous abatements that she wasn't even associated with. This council wasn't associated with. Rick, we've done some in the past, but it just goes to show you the importance of having that in our ordinance, that 15% refund that we get back from them.
That's great. Thank you, Sean. Utility Liaison, Council Leon.
President Bella, no report tonight.
Okay. Parks Recreations and Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yeah, Mr. President, real quick. Again, we'll have our fourth Thursday, August 28, I think it is, Jerry, and I'll defer to Mr. McCartney for his staff report later on. That'll be at 5 o'clock on the 28th.
Thank you. Moving on to special committees abandoned and invited properties, Council Shee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report. Well, the gas station that we spoke about, the abandoned one on 30, we did reach out, and Joe, do you have anything to report on that?
Yeah, so I've been in contact with the owner. I'm going to be in contact with his attorney tomorrow. The owner has secured though the building. It's totally secure. I had police check it out, as well as they secured supposedly the UST tanks that were exposed.
In the ground. Okay.
I will, if I could add, Shawna, and Rick, I think you saw this article. Sheila and Angie and I met with a company called Dutch Brothers, and I know Ms. Shine is a big fan of Dutch Brother Coffee. They're opening up a location of Albarazo. They specifically looked at that gas station as putting a Dutch Brothers in there. And again, the owner needs to realize that strongly and force, Joe, as you and I can do. You need to think about working with these guys, because they do an outstanding product, and that would be a great redevelopment of a brownfield site, put in a coffee drive-through there.
One of the odd things about the property is it's got a easement through the property because it gives access. So there needs to be a project that's going to not encumber the easement, that's going to flow well with the property itself, and that sounds like a might. So I'll mention that to the attorney I talked to. But I wanted to give you that, okay?
Thank you. That's my report for that.
Very good. Special Town Projects, Councilor Neal.
No report.
Semi-quintcentennial Committee, Councilor Shee.
We are still looking for residents to be volunteers or be a part of the semi-quintcentennial committee that is coming up. The semi-quintcentennial committee, we are looking for residents. So if you want to be a part of the committee, please do email me at shedwirth@maryville.in.gov.
It's on the website, too.
It's on the website as well. That is all from my report.
Thank you. Moving on to Department and Commission reports. Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Lake.
Yeah, thank you. Really quick, we're doing some specialized maintenance in Bynarrow Lake, specifically sediment removal in front of the outlet, which is a box culvert. And so we have a contractor lined up to do that. We're also doing several emergency repairs throughout town. Councilor Yuzlak mentioned the Beaver Dams that seem to be prevalent throughout our waterways, and so we're systematically relocating them with our beaver trapper. And so our HOAs and other entities have deemed their responsibilities. 97 in grand, all the land acquisition paperwork is in order with regards to easements and land ownership that we need for the project. The owner signed off on it, and so we'll have that prepared for town council president Bella's signature, for your signature, so then that project can move forward. That's a very important project, not only for the drainage aspect but for the public safety aspect within that area. And we had a really productive meeting with American Structure Point this afternoon regarding the regional watershed plan and how that's going to impact and affect our stormwater master plan and projects that are going to be eligible for cost share through Little Cal. So we are collaborating on that, and it was a very productive meeting. Dyer hosted the Northwestern Indiana Stormwater Advisory Group meeting earlier this week. Stacy Goodwin from IDM gave an update on IDM's plans for future compliance. They're looking towards a tiered compliance level system, whereas population dictates the amount of compliance you have to have. So those with 35,000 and up, which we fall into that category, would have a higher level of compliance. So things are changing and ramping up with the permitting and our obligations to comply with that. And that's all I have at the moment.
Matt, that meeting looked well attended from...
Yeah, yeah. We had several higher-ups from the state, including Randy Braun, who is the department head of that particular division. And we had representatives from most of the communities in Lake Porter and La Porte.
Wow.
As well as consultants, and several presentations were given. And again, we do this cooperatively, voluntarily, in order to share our, you know, our efforts and our ideas. And I think compliance is good when you are, you know, doing it together. And so it's a cooperative way for us to share our resources and our experiences.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Councilor Hardaway.
No report, Mr. ... Oh, I do have a date for them. The next meeting is August 21st.
Oh, coming up. All right. Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. The next household hazardous waste is actually tomorrow in Whiting, at Whiting Public Works, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that's at 1915 Front Street. After that, there's only going to be two more collections for the remainder of the year, one in September and one in October. And this one that's in Whiting, they will take the paper shredding, too. And that's all.
That's going to be a big meeting from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m.?
No, not a meeting. This is for the election for the household hazardous waste.
Gotcha. My bad.
If anybody still has things they want to get rid of at their home, this is the location, and it's tomorrow from 2:00 to 6:00.
Understood.
Our next Lake County Solid Waste meeting is the third Thursday in September.
Thank you. The shared ethics entity, Councilor Hardaway.
No report. Just waiting on the next event, which should be coming up this fall.
Okay.
In the morning. So more details to come.
Keisha, do you or Mrs. Neal have a report from the Fire Territory Board?
We have a meeting on Thursday.
On Thursday?
Always a day ahead of you guys.
Yeah.
Clerk Trezor's report. Mr. January.
Briefly. For the month of June, we had collected $168,277.60 from the food and beverage stocks. That brings up fund to $2,089,273.29 previously. Mr. Pettit, when I mentioned the 1.9, I wasn't including the $168,000 that we received. So I have also intended on providing a summary of report, but I'll have to defer that to the next meeting, just showing what we spent in personnel services, supplies, other categories that they have. I just got to get some numbers dialed before I do that. But that will be at the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to department heads. Jerry, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, thank you. A flooring update for our community rooms. ICC floors and core construction met last Wednesday, so they're making some progress. It was nice to see them both together working on the flooring issue that has been there. We have quotes for repainting the area where the Boys and Girls Club was for last school year. We have three quotes ranging from $3,500 to $7,500 for all three rooms and also the hallway leading into the community spaces. We just finished our two, first, what I call our youth sports pilot programs in basketball and flag football this summer, kind of testing out our capacity, what we can do at the center, and provide those activities for youth as well as our adult sports. So I would call our pilot program a success, and we're waiting on feedback through surveys, both digitally and paper copies, if your youth member participated in any of those activities this summer, so we can improve on that and kind of expand what we're doing. And then just getting ready to plan out our fall sports and activities for the center. Having those community spaces back once the floors are done and rooms are painted will allow us to offer much more, so.
Good. Moving on to the Police Department, Assistant Chief Matt Vassal.
Good evening. I got stats here from July. We had 2,615 calls for service. We had 4,561 officer responses. We had 86 extra patrols that's normally on businesses and the gas station that was mentioned previously that has issues. We had 125 adult arrests, one juvenile arrest, 406 traffic stops, and 411 traffic citations. As was mentioned earlier, school starts tomorrow, so we will have officers at all schools throughout the day. And there was a press release, I think Chaz put it out earlier this week, reference extra patrols will be out for traffic. Once for the stop arm on school buses, we'll make sure we're doing that out there, increasing our presence with all the other multiple traffic violations throughout the area we're trying to hit. But it's obviously, it's a big town, so we're trying to do our best to take care of that. And then, I think the thing we do the most is last Tuesday, a big thank you to everybody that attended and helped out with National Night Out. It was fantastic. It was good seeing a lot of our employees show up, but also just the residents. We're thankful. We thank for all the businesses. It was a great time, and we're really looking forward to next year and planning for even a bigger and better time.
That's great. Thank you, Chief. Planning and Building Department, Sheila Shine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Building Department has sent out their renewals for rental registration. We have many people who are caught renting without signing up for rental registration, and there is a, and I would ask, Mr. President, that Matt would post it on the website, because there's a $500 fee if you don't register and if you're late with your renewal. Thank you, Mr. President. It's in the ordinance.
Very good. Street Department, Mr. King.
The only other thing I have to add, the tunnel project. So we got the murals done...
The only other thing I have to add, the tunnel project. So we got the murals done. We painted the inside. It was graffitied up again, so we painted it again. And we're working on the lighting, working with Jerry on the lighting. We'll get some costs, and we'll present to the council. We might even, depending on what the costs are, Jerry and I were talking, and we might even upgrade the lighting in the tunnel underneath I-65 over here. So we're looking at that now. Just taking, we're busy, so it's just taking me some time to get this stuff together, so.
So are just some of the lights out? We don't have a dark tunnel out there, right?
Yeah, both of them are dark.
Both of them, yeah.
Both of them. And the problem is, the one for the Erie Lacawanna is we put, you know, vandal-proof lights in there. You can't break them, but they spray paint over them. So you can't get the paint off, and it just ruins them. So you're fighting, it's a never-ending battle. Whatever you do, it's a never-ending battle.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Chaz, anything else from administration to report?
Yeah, we have a few things to report. A little update on the South Side Fire Station project. Last week, Chief Yerga met with the design team for that project, and things are progressing smoothly. It will not only include the living quarters and the apparatus bays, but also some space for public or for Street Department for their salt barn out there, which will help them out. Under their current schedule, bidding could start in early 2026 with construction following in March. And then if everything moves as planned, you could see that facility open up in the spring or summer of 2027. So that was a really good meeting. I sat in on it for Michael while he's out. And then also wanted to let the residents know that through a grant from the Legacy Foundation, Maryville residents who are 65 and older, as well as any Maryville residents with disabilities, can come in here and get a free 30-day bus pass for the GPTC bus that goes up and down Broadway and throughout the town. You just need to come in, come to the town administration office with your proof of age and residency, and we will issue the passes from there. It's on a first-come, first-served basis with 50 going out each month. So if you know anybody who could use something like that, please let them know that they could come in here and pick that up. And you can find all of that information on the MyMaryville app. So please download that, and you'll get the information about what I just talked about, as well as the police stats and the parks programs, all of that. So if you haven't downloaded, please download that app.
And I think we're at about 1,000 users now, right, between Apple and non-Apple phones, Androids? Thank you.
And if you compare that to, I spoke to council president Bella earlier, if you compare that to the notification system we had before, we're almost at the same number of users in about a month that we had for something that was in place for years. So people are definitely attracted to it, and we get requests from the schools to post things there as well. So we're more than willing to help them out with that, so.
Great. Thank you, Chaz. Moving on tonight to ordinances, ordinance 25-17 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 13.5 of the Maryville Municipal Code, establishing and revising a fee structure for the Parks and Recreation Department. This has been reworked a couple different times. I think they went through the Parks Department first, and then to the committee, and then to the full council. What is your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, and seconded by half the council to approve the revised and authorized park and recreation fees.
Okay, 25-17.
Eric can figure out who it is.
Right.
Any questions or comments?
No.
No.
What? Eric, roll call, please.
Sure. And we're on ordinance 25-17?
We are, sir.
Okay. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 25-24. It is an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code and to correct typos, excuse me, I can't even say the word typos, to correct errors in a modification of planning and building department fees and charges.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Counselor Shee, for approval, ordinance 25-24 on first reading. Sheila, anything to add to this?
Just that we needed to look at the way the fees were calculated with permit tracks as well as we used the calculator. And so we needed to look at that.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances. We have ordinance 25-22 is an ordinance to further amend the existing wage and salary ordinance to modify salaries of the fire inspector, a court, and clerk staff member to modify job titles in the Park Department and clarifies a position in town administration.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Neal. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Shee, thank you. Questions or comments on the ordinance? This is something else we've kind of been reworking and working, right? Any other questions? Clerk Trezor, roll call, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on to ordinance 25-23 on second reading. It is an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code to make certain changes to the hazmat fund, reestablishing it, defining its purpose consistent with state law, and formally reassigning certain existing fees to the proper fund for deposits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Counselor Neal, was it?
Yes.
Yes.
For approval of ordinance 25-23. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries. That concludes our ordinances. Moving on tonight to resolutions. We do have one transfer of funds. It's a resolution providing the transfer of appropriation balances from and among major budget classifications in the Streets Department and motor vehicle restricted and LRS funds, as requested by the proper officer and forwarded to the town council for action tonight.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Yuzlak, with a second by Counselor Neal for approval of this transfer. You can see there, it's transferring a decrease of $16,000, increases the same, a decrease of $1,000, increases the same into uniforms. Net effect is zero. Questions or comments? Hearing none. This is a resolution. A voice vote is fine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have no old business tonight. We have no new business. I will announce that the next council meeting is August 26 at 6:30. The RDC meeting is prior to that at 6:00, right, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Any...
Plan Commission next Tuesday.
Plan Commission next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Without objection from the council, I will adjourn. Any objections? Hearing none.
You'll need a motion in a second.
Not if I gavel it down. We are adjourned. Thank you all.